Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carlin?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Darner?
Here.
Kurza?
Here.
Olstead?
Here.
Peshaw?
Here.
Solaji?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe Dr. Cartwright will start us off with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Then we will move on to Board and Administrative Report, starting with the Board President's Report, a very short report tonight. Last night, I represented this board at the CISA 6 Board of Control Meeting. It's always a pleasure to do that and find out what's going on in some of our neighboring districts. I also want to call out four of our teachers who are part of Arts Core, which is a collaborative venture between the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, the Paint Arts Center in Gardens, and regional school districts to provide pre-service teachers as well as early-career teachers with opportunities to learn how to integrate in and with the arts in their subject areas. There was an Arts Core Bridge Day held on Saturday, September 26th. There were six breakout sessions, and four of those were led by Oshkosh Area School District teachers. So, we send congratulations and thank you. Thank yous to Ta Fighter, who is at Merrill Middle School, Brianna Lubbers, also at Merrill Middle School, and Lee Marms, also at Merrill Middle School, and finally Teresa Moka, an elementary art teacher at Carl Trager Elementary School. So, they did a great job representing in our district and noting how to integrate the arts in social studies, English, and these several subjects at the sixth-grade level. So, thank you to Ta, Teresa, Brianna, and Lee. With that, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much. Still have some good news to share with all of us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started right away. Over at Carl Trager Elementary School, the staff at Carl Trager Elementary School recently sponsored a meal for the homeless at Riverside Park. After learning about citizenship and how to show they care for their community, Carl Trager first graders made notes of encouragement for those in need. Additionally, second graders in Hannah Moon's class recently celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day. Students watched a video, read a story, and created a flip-grid project where they shared a family tradition which helped them learn about the impact culture has on identity development. The student-led cafes located inside Oshkosh West and Oshkosh North High Schools are continuing to provide valuable learning experiences for students. Oshkosh West students enrolled in the Project Life program, and Oshkosh North Vocational Skills students are learning valuable job skills while operating the Wildcat Cafe and the Spartan Snack Shack. The students have been able to safely serve school food and provide a unique delivery service to those working in the schools. In October, Americans observe the National Disability Employment Awareness Month by paying tribute to the accomplishments of the men and women with disabilities whose work helps keep the nation's economy strong. We are grateful for the real-life work experiences we're able to provide our students throughout the district to help them prepare to enter the workforce. Education looks different this year, but we are so grateful that all of our students, staff, and families are doing what they're doing in order to support learning. Additionally, I would like to take a moment to recognize October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. It's a time to come together to raise awareness, share resources, and to tell stories about dyslexia successes. We are grateful for the continued efforts of our staff and students, as well as so many of our partners and organizations who help those impacted by dyslexia. A groundbreaking ceremony was recently held for the Oshkosh North Veterans Courtyard, which will honor alumni and staff of Oshkosh North who have served in the military. The courtyard is a project of the Communities at Oshkosh North Program and was made possible by numerous donors and supporters. To learn more or make a donation, please visit the Communities webpage. At this time, I would like to again take a moment to provide an update related to our E-Academy Program. This is our full-time enrollment as of September the 21st. You'll see how we had a little bit over 1,000 students. Of those students, we have approximately 13.6% of them that are students with disabilities, which is a fewer percentage amount than what we have district-wide. Likewise, with English learners, we have approximately 6.3%, and those who are on free and reduced lunch at 18.9%. And then you can see the breakout for all of the different races that are available on there. A little bit of a higher percentage that you would see related to our Asian population, as well as a little bit of a lower percentage related to our white population. And on the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time lately. One of the things I was very honored to be able to be a part of, in addition to committee meetings, school site meetings and such, was the opportunity to go to Shawn Robinson's Awareness Ride for the Dyslexia Month. He and I had a very meaningful conversation, and it was very exciting to see all of the things that he is doing in order to bring awareness to our community. So, without further ado, at this point in time, I'm going to ask Mr. Kammer to come forward in order to provide us with a staff report related to COVID-19.
Good evening, everybody. With all the attention that our state and our area has been receiving in the media, it's probably not much of a surprise that the COVID situation in our area is really not good. We continue to see significant uncontrolled spread of COVID-19 in our community. And for those out there that may not be familiar with our reports that we do at the board meeting every other week, we look at the Health Department's weekly data summary. So, every week, the Health Department puts out a summary based on the case rate in our area, and they look at the previous two-week period. So, the most recent report that we have looks at the dates of September 23rd through October 6th. So, this report came out last Thursday. On October 8th, there's going to be an updated report that comes out tomorrow. So, the way the Health Department does this is they break it down by the geographical boundaries of each school district. So, we get a pretty good picture of where things lie in our district related to COVID-19. And based on this most recent report, our case rate for our geographical boundary was at 1,179. So, please keep in mind that a case rate of 100 is considered high, and a case rate of 350 or higher is considered very high. So, we are significantly above the cutoff for what is the very-high range. They also break it down by age ranges. And for the age groups of 5 through 9, the burden status for that group was considered high. For the age group of 10 through 14, the burn status was considered very high, and is also very high for the age group of 15 to 17. And I mentioned, you know, we've been getting a lot of attention, but that's nationally as well as locally. Last time, we had a board meeting. Dr. Cartwright mentioned the New York Times, and every week, they publish some rankings based on where the current spread is the highest in the country and where it's growing the fastest. And unfortunately, for the second week in a row, the Oshkosh-Nina area was ranked number one in the country on that list. Now, they just updated the rankings today, and I went in and looked before the board meeting. We're now at number two, but this is now week three where we are at or very close to the top of those rankings. So, with that, some of the other key points that were in the county report, the Winnebago County Health Department reports that they're currently exceeding their testing capacity, as well as their case investigation capacity. And that has been causing some difficulties for us as a school district in terms of investigating our own cases when we get reports of students or staff members who have tested positive. Along with that, they report that hospitalizations for COVID-19 are also at record levels in our area. So, with that being said, last week, the district launched a COVID-19 database. And the reason we did that is we just wanted to keep the community updated on where we are at in terms of the number of positive cases that we currently have active in the district, and then the cumulative total of positive cases. It also looks at the number of individuals who have had to quarantine, both students and staff, and the total number of quarantines that we've had as a district since the start of the school year. And that can be found on our webpage.
Mr. Kammer, I know one thing that's very important. We had one individual reach out to us with this request. Why is it so important, even though we're in virtual learning right now, that if there is a student who has either been confirmed as having COVID-19, or a family that's been confirmed of having it, or is having to quarantine as a result of that, why is it so important that they really need to continue to call in and let our nurses be aware of this? Why is that so important?
Yeah. So, there are really two key reasons for that. The first is, is we consider when we're going to be moving back to a Model 3 or in-person instruction, we really need to know, as much as we possibly can, how many active positive cases there are out there among our students and staff. So, it's really important that that information continues to be reported to our nurses. In addition to that, when we do return to in-person instruction, we really need to know what the quarantine periods are for those individuals who are actively quarantining. You know, our nurses do a great job of tracking that information, and there have been, you know, cases where students or staff may try to come back before their quarantine date is actually up. You know, it may just be a mistake on their part, but the fact that our nurses are monitoring that so close really protects the rest of the people who are going to be present within our schools.
And even duly noted today during our report-outs related to health departments all throughout the Fox Valley region, one thing that was of note is that unfortunately, not only are our hospitalization rates are going up and continuing to go up, but we are now experiencing a steep increase on our death rate as well. In addition to that, it is not specific to just the elderly. Unfortunately, for example, last night, the individual within Winnebago County was in their 40s that passed away last night. So, we just share the information as we continue to encourage our communities to please wear your face masks, please maintain the six feet of social distancing, please stay with your family units, and try not to be outside of your family units as much as possible. And just as important is, please make sure you are keeping your hands clean, either by washing them or using some type of hand sanitizer. And the newest addition to this is, go ahead now and get your flu shot. Don't wait. It's of critical importance, especially with our hospitals already being, having a difficult time handling the cases that they have related to COVID. Once flu season starts, it's only going to get worse. So, those are the safety recommendations that are being given right now from our health departments. Thank you all. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kammer and Dr. Cartwright, for that sobering update.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Pinkston, now she comes in. Need to preface her report just a little bit because I think this is timely information at this point in time. She's going to be giving you a report about our first Equity and Diversity Committee, but want to do a definition clarification statement from the district. We made some statements over the summer. We've done it early in the school year, and I think it's important just to make sure that we are continuing to make commitments and letting you see the actions that we are doing. The words "systemic racism" can be interpreted by one's own understanding and perception. In the Webster Dictionary, systemic racism is defined as a type of racism. Specifically, it states, "The systemic oppression of a racial group to the social, economic, and political advantage of another." It also states that it's a political or social system founded on racism and designed to execute its principles. Systemic racism is the result of what has occurred over a period of time, originated by our ancestors' actions, and continues in many institutions, organizations, and systems. Through actions over time, such as historical redlining of communities, loan opportunities, inequitable funding of schools or school districts, and explicit biases, many systems and practices have resulted in inequalities and inequities. Systemic racism speaks towards those practices, systems, organizations, and goes beyond the personal actions of an individual or their beliefs around race. In the Oshkosh Area School District, we recognize that we have situations where unintended biases and practices occur, just as seen in most other educational organizations. We do not believe that we are intentionally racist or a racist organization currently, but rather recognize that education across the nation and over time is one that has implicit biases and inequitable practices within it. We are committed to dismantling any process that leads to inequities, disproportionality, and lasting achievement gaps with our Black students. We are on the forefront in our region and state in this commitment to ensure that hidden, implicit, and unintended biases and practices are addressed so that we can ensure equity for students of diverse races, disabilities, sex, economic status, gender identity fluid, and religious belief. We are an educational system amongst thousands across the U.S., but we are one that is devoted to taking action. One of our recent actions is the creation of our Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee, and Dr. Pinkston will provide us with a report regarding this committee's actions. Dr. Pinkston?
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Good evening, Board. The district created a committee dedicated to addressing the topics of equity and diversity by working collaboratively to solicit feedback from the community in regards to our existing work. Last evening, we had our first meeting with our committee members, and the focus of last evening's meeting was to provide the committee members with an opportunity to get to know each other, to establish norms going forward, and also to begin discussing the purpose and the vision for the committee. The district has been invited to present along the lines of our work with our equity initiatives. We have been invited to present at the WASBO, which stands for the Wisconsin Area of School Business Officials, and WASPA, the Wisconsin Association of School Personnel. And we've been asked to present not only our district's equity work as it pertains to the work that we have been doing with our building-level administrators and with our teachers. We are also along the lines of highlighting the alignment with our strategic plan of sharing what our district has done as far as our recruiting efforts to increase our diversity and our inclusion within our school district. And I am doing this work along with Dr. Kim Brown, who was invited to present at this conference coming up in December with me, and also Ms. Linda Pieron. The committee is very excited to embark upon this adventure and this journey of our equity work and extension of the work that we're doing as a district. They are very passionate about having an opportunity to provide input on our district work, and we are very fortunate and very excited to be working with them.
Any questions?
I want to applaud these efforts, which tie in very well with the district's strategic plan. A strategic plan, I think, is only as good as the actions that look to implement the components, and so I'm very happy to hear that this is moving along. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards has recently formed a subcommittee within their board, and I have the honor of serving on that board, as well as the subcommittee, which is looking at equity throughout the state, whether that's students on free and reduced lunch, students with disability, and other students, perhaps, who have been underrepresented at higher levels of achievement and opportunities in the state. In addition, I know that Dr. Carolyn Stanford-Brown, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, when she recently provided the state with her speech on the state of education in the state, indicated that equity will be a big part of that. So, I like the alignment that I'm seeing here with our district and these two statewide organizations to make sure that all Wisconsin students and all Oshkosh Area School District students have equal opportunities for success. So, thank you to everyone involved, the two of you, and the rest of the cabinet, and the members of your group. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog, and I look forward to, in the coming months, sharing the work of the committee with the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, if I could ask Dr. Gunlock to come forward to give us a report related to our referendum.
Good evening, everybody. Well, we're getting down into the home stretch, so there's only a few more weeks before the election. We've been having a lot of success doing multiple presentations in the community. We continue to meet weekly with our referendum team to kind of go over, what are we hearing, what are some questions that are coming up, places we can go, people we can talk to, and that's going well. Just an idea of some of the schedule, we did do some, two in-person presentations, one on the 29th and one on the 1st. We did a virtual presentation, which was slightly more attended, which you would assume on the 6th. All of those were, well, the Zoom one was recorded. We also did a presentation to the Southwest Rotary that was in-person, and that's always preferred, but that's becoming more scarce these days, you know, understandably so. But that's probably the biggest difference, at least that I've noticed from past referendums, you know, we would get out to all of those groups and get a chance to actually sit down and talk with folks. So, this is a little bit different. We also did a couple of staff, three staff question-and-answer sessions, where staff members could watch the presentation. They would watch the 18-minute presentation, and then they would be able to fire away questions at all of us, and we would answer them. The beauty of that one is it really does give us more frequently asked questions that we can begin answering, and we're putting up on our website right now. For the future, we have a Learning and Retirement presentation that Dr. Cartwright was instrumental in setting up. That's coming up on October 20th, and then we will be presenting to the Morning Kiwanis on October 30th. So, those are the two that are coming up in the future. Some of the frequently asked questions that have been popping up, that I think are very important, one of them is, where will the Merrill Elementary students go? Because people are watching the presentation and the new elementary school. It makes sense to everyone that the Webster students would go there and the Washington students would go there. What's interesting to know is the vast majority of the Merrill students will also likely go there. If you take the current enrollment of Merrill Elementary, Washington Elementary, and Webster Elementary, it's 624 students. The new school can hold 600 students. So, all but 24 students most likely would go there. The rest would go to Reed. Now, obviously, that's going to be a boundary redraw, very similar to what we did when Oaklawn was built, and that would be brought forward to you as a school board, should we be fortunate enough to be able to do this. Second question, that was a really good one too, was, why Merrill, Webster, and Washington? Why are we starting there? You've heard this before, and you guys know this, but most people did not realize that just repairing those three facilities alone will cost us $23 million. And that is quite a significant down payment on the $107 million project that is question two. So, that was another thing that people were not aware of. The third one was, this is kind of an interesting one. People are already looking past Phase 1. They want to know, what's Phase 2, 3, 4? They're very interested in the work that you did as a board, along with the Facility Advisory Committee, and fortunately, we have all that on our website as well. So, they went back and looked at all of that, which was really cool. There was a lot of excitement about that, that kind of concept of, well, when would you come back with a 2? When would you come back with a 3? So, they were able to look up that information. Obviously, the timing is going to be dependent upon the voters and the success that we have with Phase 1. So, and costing, we have rough costing, but nothing really that you can lean on at this point because it would be so far in the future. So, those are some of the frequently asked questions. Question?
So, again, why, you know, it was a very good question. People are asking, why are we starting with the Webster Merrill site, and why are we starting on the east side of town, and where are some of the thoughts behind that?
Well, I think, and I can't speak for the Facility Advisory Committee, but I do know the majority of those discussions landed on a couple of things. Obviously, the large price tag of repairs made it a fiscally prudent decision to do that, but close on the heels of that was a discussion about, I think they were starting to imagine how amazing it would be to have two of the most advanced schools in the state of Wisconsin serving our most diverse population in Oshkosh. And that was one of the conversations we had with the Neighborhood Association this past week, is we just took a moment to say, you know, can you imagine if we were fortunate enough to be able to do this? And what that would mean for those families that typically go to some of our oldest, and in some cases, our schools that are least flexible, in need of the most repair. And while they're very classic, they're not, the curb appeal is not exactly awesome. So, it really would be amazing to be able to offer services to students in those areas. So...
And I think that speaks volumes, because it goes back to what we heard from our community related to when we were doing the survey in order to rewrite our strategic plan, where we heard them saying, equity, equitable practices, facilities, equity within your facilities, and just understanding and hearing how that resonates and how this board, with the recommendation from the Facility Advisory Committee that you instituted for us, were able to come to that same conclusion as well. And Dr. Gunlock, the only other question I have is with our capital referendum, or question 2, so we've been talking a lot about those five schools, but is it touching every school within the district?
Yes. When you, well, it's not touching every school, okay, but it's touching the schools other than Webster, Merrill, Washington, and Oaklawn. Those are the schools that get left out of this plan because they're slated to be replaced in the plan, and Oaklawn is brand-new. So, it obviously has a secure office with a secure vestibule. It's designed, and if you've not been to Oaklawn, I suggest, you know, I would encourage you to go take a look. It's a beautiful facility. The board had to work with Bray Architects. It did a wonderful job in the design, and it was not an easy design because the footprint had to fit on a relatively small lot, and they did a fantastic job. So, yes.
So, if I could, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. If I could just clarify, so you're saying then that the capital question, which is question 2, touches schools on both what we call the north side and the west side?
Absolutely. Yeah, and it touches them in a couple of key areas. One is the safety and security piece, you know, where we had to do office relocations to create secure office spaces. That's a big one. But equally as big are some serious infrastructure upgrades. You know, you've heard fire alarms and HVAC and roofs and transformers and electrical pieces. You know, some of those things are not things that get people all super excited, other than, you know, I'm sure Jim Fox and his team would get very excited about that stuff. But it does compete with the existing budget that you have to manage and work with us on in terms of providing services to kids. And if a transformer goes at West, which could very well happen, there's a couple of million dollars instantaneously that we have to find, and that's always competing with trying to provide quality services to students. The other thing that I would say is, we do realize that the magic of what we do as a school system is in what our teachers do with kids. And we realize that facilities aren't the most important thing, but they are an important part of it. And they do compete, and they either accelerate our ability to provide those services, or they inhibit our ability to provide those services. they inhibit our ability to provide those services. And when we said imagine, we said, could you imagine if the exterior of our schools matched the amazing things going on on the interior? And that's what we would be doing with this project. So we're very excited and we're hopeful, so.
I'm still adhering, and especially reading with the last Oshkosh Examiner article about the why now question. And that's, we've dealt with that as a board too, when we were talking about this. And besides all the stuff that we say about interest rates are low, contractors are hungry, it's a good time to build, I think we'd also have to emphasize that school boards are not doing their job if they make a decision based on what's going on today. We have to look and make decisions of what's going to happen down the road.
I would imagine that in 1900, when Merrill was being constructed, a similar school board, not sitting in this room necessarily, but a similar school board had some similar conversations, you know, and they really spoke to the future 120 years later, you know, and that's a potential here. You know, the other thing was, all of those economic factors, low interest rates, $23 million worth of repairs, the fact it's going to phase in over four years, the fact that the economy will shift dramatically over four years, the fact that other districts around us are accelerating, and, you know, we need to be aware of that as well. And how I've always explained it, and Dr. Cartwright has too, the board's decision, you guys really talked around that issue a lot, and your ultimate decision was, you gave the voters the opportunity to make the choice. You didn't make the choice for them, and that's how we've explained it.
Mrs. Carter?
We were at the all-city PTO a couple of weeks ago, and I was so happy to see a parent there that was in a wheelchair, and he was pointing out the difficulties and the inequities in Merrill if you're in a wheelchair.
Right.
And at the time, I'm just following up with a question, he had suggested that we do like a virtual tour of Merrill, or maybe show how difficult it is to get around Merrill if you are in a wheelchair, because we talked about the students, not fair for the teachers and the students and the parents.
Right.
So I was just going to follow back. I never circled back to see if anything, if we were able to do something like that.
We do have a slideshow. It's not necessarily wheelchair-specific, but it does show all the different components of the schools that would be replaced, and it's kind of a throwback to what we did with Oaklawn, where we, you know, sometimes that Oaklawn slideshow was the most impactful. People were like, really? And I think this one's very similar. I do like the idea of a specific walkthrough around that, because you were in the meeting, I was in the meeting. Those comments really impacted, because there were some people who said, I like old facilities. And paraphrasing, you know, he kind of came up and said, I don't like old facilities, because they impact my ability to get through them. And we run into that, even, we have to place kids in different facilities based upon that very fact, and that's not okay.
Yeah, I was so glad he was there, too. I thought it was really good input.
Yeah, he did a great job.
And I want to drive home a point as well, is, you know, the why now question, delaying the project is something that we have to think of, not only is it from a financial standpoint, but it's also from our students' standpoint. Our students have needs, and they have a lot of needs, and the way that we're structured right now, because we're spread out so thin across multiple sites, we're not able to adequately address some of those needs that they have. And so we're taking away sometimes, as you might say, from our students. And so, again, I applaud the board for going ahead, even though it was a difficult decision, to bring it forward to our voters in order for them to tell us how to proceed on this. And again, I just want to emphasize, not only are we talking about the cost or the monetary benefit of this, but it's also the benefit of it for our students, as far as timeliness and being able to get them more and a sooner level if this were to pass.
You know, along those lines, one of the questions that we had gotten was the combining of the Merrill site, Webster site into a middle school. And, you know, we've gotten pro and con comments at the watch parties and the informational sessions, and we provide information, but they provide some really good input to us as far as what people are thinking. There's two main things. The whole point of this was to not only modernize our facilities, but provide the maximum number of services to our students at the most sustainable cost. And that really what this was, this is what that was designed about. So a three to four per grade level elementary, eight to 10 classroom per grade level middle school is the quote "sweet spot" of providing the maximum amount of services. And there's two ways to do this. We're going to have to program it properly, and we've taken in a lot of input on how we do that, but also we get to design the facility to amplify that programming. So that's something we heard loud and clear, too, was people saying, if you combine and have larger, slightly larger facilities, what are you going to do to make sure you've met what you stated was your goal, to providing the maximum number of services to the kids at a sustainable cost?
And Dr. Gunlock, you just reminded me that in that meeting, we also got a lot of questions about class size.
Yes.
And there was one family in particular that that was their point. They did not want consolidation to mean an increase in class size. So I was glad that we were able to answer that question for that parent, which is, no, we're not increasing class sizes with this consolidation plan, because I think that's another key point that we need to make sure the community is hearing. And I thought you did a really good job answering that question.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, I know it seems kind of counterintuitive sometimes, but if you want the maximum class size, keep doing what we're doing, because just the way you have to staff it, you have to run some classes hot. Whereas if they're consolidated, you have some economies of scale, that means you're able to stay at or below your class size limits. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock. I guess there are no more questions or comments at this time.
No. And again, we are very grateful for the input that we've been receiving from our community and the questions that people have been giving us as well, because we also know, in addition to that, you know, for example, there was, people were having questions related to like auditorium space. And we're like, no, 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 no. At the middle school, we are looking at auditorium space. And even at the elementary school, we're looking at, was known as like a cafeteria. So you can convert it during the day as a cafeteria, at night it's an auditorium, and our elementary school students are not eating their breakfasts and lunches inside of a gymnasium. So there were very good questions that we received on that. We're very grateful for the questions, so that way we can answer those things right away.
Dr. Herzog?
Are there, thank you, Dr. Cartwright, are there any committee chair reports for tonight? I believe Mrs. Selodjik has one.
Yes, I do have one. Hi, it's the Education Committee, met on Thursday, October 8th. We had two things on our agenda. The first one was course additions and deletions and modifications for the 2021-2022 school year. The district will be adding just one new course that is specific to the school to work program in partnership with Oshkosh Defense. The course is Career Research and Development II, so it'll be offered to seniors who are in that program. The rest of the courses will stay the same for next school year. Then we also had an update on E-Academy. We saw the slide presentation at the beginning of this meeting, where we looked at the enrollment numbers and the demographics of the E-Academy. We discussed that students who are in E-Academy will take the same assessments as students who are in traditional classrooms that are virtual. Those assessments begin this week, or, well, I guess they begin last week and they go for another week. We talked about how the E-Academy teachers are starting some synchronous learning and meetings, and that the teachers have communicated with the parents what those will be. They have also started offering elementary-level art, music, and physical education. And there will be an E-Academy transition opportunity at semester. The window to enroll into E-Academy or back to the student's homeschool is November 9th to December 4th. And then students would transition at the semester, which is January 19th. So again, that date, that window of transitioning either into E-Academy or back to the student's homeschool is November 9th through December 4th. Our next meeting is Thursday, November 5th at 8:30.
Thank you, Mrs. Selodjik. Are there any other committee reports tonight?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
The, I have a report on the Legislative Committee that met on September 24th. As always, the first thing on our agenda was the legislative update, and we discussed kind of like the elections and the Supreme Court nomination, some COVID legislatively related things. Dr. Cartwright talked about her discussion she's having with Representative Hens regarding enrollment and funding formula during the last CISA six superintendents meeting. Stephanie Carlin and met with Senator Dan Fian, where they talked about the challenges of the upcoming referendum. Stephanie Carlin and Dr. Cartwright also said they would reach out to Representative Michael Shaw, because Board Member Bob Peschel has been trying to contact him, and he was not responding to him. And then we have, which you got in your pack of safe, papers that Bob has gotten from our WASB people in preparation for our Legislative Committee discussion and for the board workshop. The October 22nd meeting has been canceled, so our next meeting is tentatively for November 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. And I believe Facilities and Finance Committee meeting is tomorrow, and then Friday is Policy and Governance, so we should have updates on those two groups by our next meeting, which I think, first meeting in November, I believe is the 4th. The first Wednesday in November. All right, then moving on, the next agenda item would be non-agenda-related public forum. There was no one who had signed up to speak tonight, and following that would have been the agenda-related public forum, but again, we have no one who has signed up for that. So we will move on to our only workshop for this evening, which is the 2020-2021 Tax Levy with Mr. Nihans, and guest.
Good evening. I've got Eric Cass with me from PMA. He's going to help me at the, towards the conclusion of the workshop here, as we get into a little bit more of the technical aspect of the workshop today. So we're here to give a tax levy workshop. The state certifies our everything and all the numbers tomorrow, and then at our next board meeting, we will be setting the actual tax levy at that point. So tonight, we're just giving you an update as the numbers, we know them right now, and I will kind of highlight the numbers that are potentially going to change. I do anticipate at least one of the numbers coming in different from when we have them right now, so we'll highlight those as we go. So the first chart you have in your workbook is kind of showing the different funds, the Fund 10, the Fund 38. For the revenue limit, those are our operational funds, because those are within the revenue limit formula. And then Fund 39 is our outside of the referendum debt, that's the Oaklawn referendum. And then Fund 80 is our community services, predominantly the recreation department. So some of these we've kind of highlighted before, but just to go over again, so in Fund 10 and Fund 38, you can see we do have a drop from prior year. And then Fund 39, we'll kind of have more of a discussion point on that in a little bit. That'll be coming up. Fund 80, remember, we increased this levy to help with the tennis courts over at West in that. So last year, even though our total levy went up a little bit, as far as dollar amounts, the mill rate last year was 9.22. This year, right now, as it sits, we're looking at an 8.92, so just about a 30 cent decrease in the tax levy. So some of the things that are impacting our tax levy that are important for everyone to know, our enrollment decreased by 92 students, or 92 full-time students from last year, which is actually pretty good considering the COVID times we're in right now, and the fact that summer school was not being able to take place as normal. So we lost quite a bit from both of those. The good thing on that is the way the state funds us, we get what's called a hold harmless for that, declining enrollment for this year. So the state calculates that $920,000 back into our revenue limit, but next year and the year after, that dollar comes back off. So it's the second and the third year of the three-year average that really get impacted, not necessarily the first year. So that'll be something coming up as we go into the next budget that we'll have to keep track of. One of our biggest impacts right now are the state aid. Our state aid went up $4.1 million from last year. So that really, it doesn't give us any extra money, but what it does is it takes, shifts that money from the local taxpayers onto the state side. So anytime we can shift money over to the state, that's a good thing. So we were able to do that this year, and that's helping our local tax levy. The Fund 38 and the Fund 80, the Fund 38 actually was reduced significantly from the prior year. Some of that is the refinancing, and some of it's just the way it's structured. So the Fund 80, again, was the tennis courts, that's why we are, put a little bit of an increase in that side. Fund 39 is the one that we really are kind of geared towards having a discussion on, because this one's going to be a little bit different than in typical years. With the reduction in the tax levy that we're able to do, we are looking at taking Fund 39 and putting an additional levy on there to help stabilize the tax levy in the upcoming years. When you have a real steep decline, it's going to come with a real steep increase in the next few years. That's just the way everything kind of ends up ebbing and flowing. So we're trying to give the board flexibility to be able to mitigate that and keep tax levies a little more predictable and a little more steady for the taxpayers. One of the, really, the only way that the board has to do that is through the Fund 39. So at this point, I'll have Eric come up, and he can kind of explain the different options the board has with that, and then some of the potential savings and other factors that were involved in having us make this decision to present this to the board as an opportunity for.
And Mr. Nihans, as you're transferring over, just for the board, as well as for our general public, just to emphasize the purpose behind even having this conversation, is because we have heard loud and clear from our community that sometimes our mill rate is going up real high and down real low, and that the concern that, oh, you know, we're doing something on the back end, when it actually has a lot to do with our property values, and the property valuation within the Oshkosh area school district boundaries. So by looking at Fund 39, what we're looking to ultimately accomplish is a stabilization of that mill rate over a period of time, so that people can appropriately budget as we're looking from year to year, so that we're not having these very steep increases or steep decreases within the mill rate of more than, ideally, more than 30 cents. We want to stay within 30 cents of that. We don't want to go beyond that. So just plating this up a little bit, and I'll turn it right back over again, so people understand the why behind the conversation. And again, we're ultimately trying to ensure that we stabilize our mill rate as a school district, and also just making sure people are aware, that may be tuning in, this is not a unique thing that we're doing. It's actually fairly common across the state with other school districts as a way in which to stabilize the mill rates. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. As was stated, my name is Eric Cass from PMA Securities. Some of you may be familiar with my colleague, Michelle Wyberg, who has probably been in front of you in the past. She unfortunately has another commitment, so you're stuck with me, so hopefully I do her justice in terms of her relationship and what she's done with you in the past. Just a little bit of context to follow up with the comments that Dr. Cartwright made. The 892, from a historical perspective, would be still the lowest tax rate over the last five years for the Oshkosh School District. The high watermark was 894, and that was in 2018-19. So that volatility, you had a high point of $10.13, so you can see to that 30 cent conversation, you really have seen a lot of volatility. So as much as this is a conversation around that mill rate management, I think it also, as we look at the next slide here in a second, your future options are to create flexibility flexibility for a lot of the unknown. The unknown really sits in the state level right now. No conversations are going on. A biennial budget conversation will be transpiring probably in the spring. This is a tool that effectively will help you manage that tax rate, again, at the lowest level over the last five years, and also provide you some of that flexibility into the future with some of these options. And I'm gonna touch on that. Another key piece in terms of what your rate actually is, is your property valuation. So this year for 2020, your property values have gone up 4.38%. Now that, albeit a number, has to be unpacked a little bit. So for the city of Oshkosh, a key factor that we look at and talk to school boards about is what is your net new construction growth? Net new construction is key, because new construction doesn't put the full burden on the local property taxpayer for any increase in the levy and/or the rate. So for the city of Oshkosh, that was 1.8%. State average is 1.6%. So your trend on net new construction here in Oshkosh is exceeding what that state average is, even during these kind of tumultuous times. So that's an important factor to consider when you're looking at that tax rate. We can look at the slide up here. What you have outstanding right now is $9.6 million from that referendum that was in April of 2012. And what the board has the authority to do is levy up to and including all existing principal and interest outstanding. Now obviously, you're not being asked to levy 9.6 million plus interest, but just giving you sense of you do have a debt structure, you need to make payments next year, but you do have full flexibility under state law that allows you to do this type of levy. This is actually my third presentation out of four this week to school boards, talking about this exact strategy, albeit on different levels with state aid going up or down or things of that nature. So it is a very popular strategy among school districts. Your payments for this debt currently run through March 1st of 2032, as it states. So if the board does, um, decide that it is a good strategy and they do decide to levy additional into Fund 39, what could those funds be used for? Well, first things first, when you do vote on setting that levy later this month, none of these options are set in stone. We're simply at a point right now where we want you to understand the pathways that you have to decide. Most likely, my recommendation to schools is to come back in spring, when the state budget becomes a little bit more clear, and decide which pathway is best for you, to keep that for future flexibility or to use one of these other strategies. So the first one that you're able to do is what's called a legal defeesence. That kind of dovetails into the last one, which is a call feature. Your debt is not callable until March 1st of 2022. So in order to use those funds this year, when your debt isn't callable, you can set up what's called a legal defeesence. It's put into a, an escrow account, earns interest, and the debt associated with that amount set aside, let's call it a million dollars, would be off of your books and you would no longer owe that. The escrow agent would take care of that for you. Advantage for that is because you are positively aided, the more you spend, the more the state gives you the following year. So when you're able to increase your expenditures in an annual basis, you get 13 cents more back from the state on average. Now that may change over time, but on average, you get a dollar 13 for every dollar you spend right now, because you're positively aided. Call feature, which I'll skip to the last one, is a strategy that you can use, where you would levy those funds this year and just kind of let them sit with a target of waiting until that debt is callable in the next fiscal year. And at that point in time, you could use those funds to call that debt early and save some interest, as well as a defeesence will save some interest. So there's a little bit of difference in terms of timing, very similar in terms of concept. One other major difference is that a defeesence has some costs associated with it. It's about $12,000 to set up that escrow, to have the lawyer sign off on things, the lawyer sign off on, and to do the work associated with that. A call, there's no cost associated with that. We work directly with the investors to do that at that point in time. To give you context, if you look at the bottom, there also is an interest savings component, right? An advantage of calling debt early is you don't have to pay the interest over periods of time that that debt is outstanding. So if you were to do a defeesence next year, we would project under the current situation that we're in right now with the economy, you'd save about $60,000 if you did that before June 30th of 2021. Again, long runway for you to decide if that's a good fit for Oshkosh, and we're happy to be a party of that conversation when the time is right. The last one is accumulate funds in a debt service account. So that's really where your future flexibility comes from. That can be used strategically by your board, the board and administration, to help react to potential decreases in state aid. Again, I come back to, nobody knows the full impact of the academy shutting down in March, what the state budget is really gonna look like. Nobody's talking and they probably won't until after the election. But when that conversation starts, there is potential that state funding isn't gonna be what it is today. And if that means less funding for the school district of Oshkosh, that could mean higher property taxes potentially. A strategy you have is you could downsize your levy next year with these funds, rather than calling debt or setting up a defeesence, you would simply not levy in Fund 39 next year for that million dollars, using my example. Therefore decreasing your property tax levy and your tax rate for your local citizens. So really, those three strategies, I know I kind of took them out of order, but that's kind of the pathways that you as a board, if you did decide to go down this route, would have to converse about probably throughout next spring and into, um, early summer.
So then just to wrap up again, going back to the slide we, we began with, our, our Fund 10 levy is going down, um, our Fund 38 levy is going down. The Fund 39 levy, um, initially would go down, but we're, we're looking at increasing the, doing the additional levy, so that would ultimately go up. Fund 80 goes up. So our total levy is, in dollars, up a little bit, but the tax levy itself is going down 30 cents. And then obviously, that, that tax levy is just a district levy. That's not the amount that the tax, taxpayers are gonna have. That decided by their municipalities and where their assessments are, but this is typically what the school districts use, is, is our tax levy, the mill rate. Does anyone have any questions on our tax levy or what's impacting it positively or negatively, or any of the Fund 39 concept?
I think you guys did a really, really great job of explaining it to people who don't do this, so thank you. It, it was very, I can understand it very well. Thank you.
How long has this been, uh, option for school boards?
How long? Um, as far as I know, ever since Fund 39 was in existence, this is, this has been an option. I know I've, I've utilized this in my prior district, um, to help, because we were, we were gonna yo-yo, and we had just, we had just passed a, a referendum there, and we were dropping just about a dollar. And I wanted to mitigate that, because two years after that, we were gonna go from, um, just under nine to up over 10 and a quarter. So I wanted to levy that out, uh, level that out. And so we, we did take advantage of this, and then ultimately, the levy, as we worked into this school budget year, um, the levy started flattening for them for the next year, so they actually did the, um, option one, and they defeased debt and got rid of some interest in, in that, that fiscal year. It, honestly, if, if, um, I, I understand the school district of Oshkosh hasn't acted on this. I know it's been brought up in the past. For, for the most recent past, it, it really wouldn't have been a viable option, because our, our mill rates, as, as Eric had kind of pointed out earlier, our mill rate was going pretty high and just starting to want to work its way back down. So when you're up in the tens, you don't really want to necessarily take advantage of this tool, because you're still lawfully high in comparison. So it's kind of a perfect storm of, we got a very good increase in state aid, partly because we spent and had a lot more expenditures than we had in the past. So we were able to capture more state aid. At the same time that we were capturing a, a significant amount of state aid, our property valuations went up significantly compared to the average in the state, which also created a, a lowering of the tax levy at the same time on, on the local property taxes. So that allowed us to be in a situation, and again, part of the eight, 892, that gets us back to one of the lowest we've been in the last 10 years. So it is a fairly significant number and a nice place to be. So then that's a nice branching point for, let's start here and then we can see where we're going in the future. And obviously, this won't be the, the last conversation the board has on this. We'll be doing workshops as we go. If this, if this does, um, is the direction the board wants to go, we, we will be doing workshops, not only on how to use this, but where we want to set that parameter for the future to help guide us and to guide Eric and Michelle and myself on when this is a tool we should be looking at in the future as well. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Are there other questions, Mrs. Carlin?
I'm going to ask a ridiculous question that I think does not have an answer, because we're in a pandemic and nobody knows what the future is gonna be. But I just am wondering, you mentioned that after the election, things could change and for better, for the worse. So, so we can be prepared, do you have like a worst-case scenario? Um, like what is the worst thing that could happen? That they could reduce our funding and...
Worst.
And I know, and it's a ridiculous question, because nobody knows the answer to the question.
That's a loaded question.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it runs the gamut. Worst, absolute worst case, um, what I have heard, absolute worst case would be similar cuts to Act 10.
Okay.
Um, so fairly significant reductions. Now, I, I don't think that's realistically gonna happen. Um, the, the state budget has been coming back with, in a much better condition than when everyone was doom and gloom back in, even in summer. Realistically, is there gonna be an adjustment? Probably. Is it gonna be drastic for schools? Eh, we have to wait and see. But, I mean, worst case would be probably on par to Act 10, but again, I don't, I don't see it anywhere getting close to that level. Um, but again, part of, part of the reasoning for this is this provides you the flexibility, if there is reductions, which we anticipate. If they're a little bit more severe than what, what we think we should tolerate, this provides flexibility to make an adjustment on our end for, for a year and possibly two or three, depending on what, what kind of adjustments we have to make to kind of help level that out, so it, it doesn't impact as much.
Thank you. I just have one more question. When is the pandemic gonna end? Do you know the answer to that question?
Nope.
Okay.
That would be Mr. Kemer.
Are there other questions, Mr. Peschel?
I have one. Sure. Um, so that, let's just say that 100 million, or that 100 million, the million dollars you were talking about, um, do, it, how long can it sit, say, if we do the, the defeesence? How long can it sit there?
Um, so it can sit there as long as you have debt outstanding.
Okay. So, and that's, that was 2032, right?
2032, correct.
All right. So then the other option, the calling option, is there just, and you may have said this, so I'm sorry if you're repeating it.
No, you're good.
Um, is that, is that a similar, is that a similar thing? That if we call that, we have to call that debt on, that, that's, that's callable?
So your debt becomes callable on March 1st, 2022. So that call feature is in existence for all principal up into 2032. So that full 10-year window. Obviously, it decreases every year you go through it, because you're paying principal off. But those maturities would continue to be callable as soon as you hit March 1st of 2022.
So, is there, um, is there benefit to, so let's say, you know, we have that million dollars there, not using all of that million dollars to that callable debt, and then, can, can we put that differently? Can we put some in escrow and then put some, then can we, can we also call some of that debt? Can we use both options?
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. So you could use, using a million dollars as an example, you could use a half a million to call debt and leave a half a million sitting in your account. You could do a half a million for a defeesence, wait to do half a million for a call, you can do a mixture of all of those.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there other comments or questions? I certainly echo what, uh, Mrs. Olmstead said. I think you, you both did an excellent job of presenting this, and I, I really like a, a comment on slide five that, um, the recommendation to increase this levy to roughly 2 and 1/4 million dollars would provide stability for future tax levies. Stability, in, especially at this time and place, with this pandemic that's going on, stability is important to a lot of people. So providing stability and providing flexibility to the board, I see as two major advantages of what you're proposing. So thank you.
Absolutely. Can I, may I? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Peschel.
So you, you said, you stated something, so it, it created a question, so. Um, so the, the 250 million dollars, what, if we were to increase the levy to get to that, what would the levy become?
Not 250 million.
200...
I'm sorry, what? I didn't quite understand.
250,000, is that what you meant, or 200? Did you mean 250?
No, I meant 2 million, 200, I'm terrible with numbers.
To, to get it up to that, 2.25?
Yeah. What would our...
The, the 8.9, 8.92 is what it is.
The 8.92 would do the...
That includes, that includes the additional levy. The 8.92 is what it becomes. What we're, what we're trying to avoid is, if we don't do that, the levy will be about an 8.63.
Okay.
In that range, which sounds great now, but we know in a year or two, it's gonna spike back up, and now we're gonna be, no one, everyone, no one's gonna complain when it goes down.
Sure.
But as soon as it goes up even a little bit, you're gonna hear about it. So we're just trying to mitigate that at this point. And again, the 8.9, where that came in, one, it was very close to where we had in the budget hearing, before some of our numbers started changing. Um, we, the property valuation came back considerably stronger than what the state was originally giving us. But that also, again, references back to historically, in the last five to 10 years, this is still an extremely good rate for the Oshkosh area. So we're kind of using that as the gauge of, okay, here's a good, good spot to be.
Okay. And so that, the 2,250,000 dollars is the combination of...
Correct.
The 8.75, or the 8.76 and the 1.3.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and if there is a ju, an adjustment within the levy, this is where that adjustment's gonna be, because the, the outstanding numbers that we really aren't sure right now, that we're waiting for tomorrow, the voucher school enrollment that we get charged for, we have no idea until the state releases that tomorrow, what the impact is of that is gonna be. So that's gonna be the biggest factor in whether or not the levy stays as we currently predict it. So if that goes up significantly, we'll shrink what the additional in 39 is to keep it in that 892, because I'm, I'm pretty comfortable myself keeping it in the 892, and that's what I would be recommending at the next board meeting. So this is the number that'll fluctuate if we have a, a surprise tomorrow. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else with a question or a comment? I believe under state law, that school boards have to set their levies before the end of October.
Correct.
So this will be coming back to us the last meeting of the month, which would be two weeks from tonight, or October 28th.
Correct.
All right. Thanks again, gentlemen. And Mr. Cass, you did very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have the consent agenda, consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will, will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull anything from the consent agenda? I would like to pull Resolution 1B, which is a retirement. So that means the board will consider approval of one, personnel, A, appointments, resignations, and salaries, and two, easement for Oakwood Road. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Brusau?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 1B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirement as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. This gives us an opportunity to thank Roberta Abbott, who has served as a cross-categorical, excuse me, can't say that word tonight, cross-categorical teacher assistant with the school district for 28 years, and is looking to retire from Reed Elementary. We want to thank Roberta for her years of devoted student, devoted time to her students and this, and the families of our community, and wish her well in her retirement. Any other comments?
It's the face mask that does that.
It's the mask. I was saying, no, sorry. Please call the roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Brusau?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. So, we just took care of the individual considered, individually considered resolution. Are there any requests for additional or future agenda items? Seeing none at this time, are there any announcements tonight?
Just a reminder, Dr. Herzog, that next Monday on October 19th at 6:30 PM, we will be having a special board meeting for the purpose of a board retreat.
Very good. And that will be in this very room, correct? All right. 6:30 next Monday night. All right? Okay. I entertain a motion then to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Keschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
We adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone. Motion carries.